It's five thirty. I call the Lawrence County Council meeting to order December eighth, two thousand and fifteen. As always, we have an indication tonight by Councilman McDaniel, and then we'll all join to the pledge of allegiance. We'll all...
In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I get started tonight, or everybody on up here tonight has a copy of this, it's public comment rule. Starting in January, we're gonna have a sign-up sheet over here, Mr. Crouches. If you want to speak before county, you put your name, your address, what you're gonna speak about, and you'll be called on by the way you sign up on this sign-up sheet. I'm not trying to put a muzzle on anybody, I'm just trying to not let anything else happen like happened last meeting when people start speaking out of turn and so forth. But I'd like the council to review the rules. As each person signs up, they'll get a copy of the rule, what is allowed. We can't allow someone to come up to the podium and make accusations against someone that may or may not be true. There's several different things we gotta protect ourselves from. So that's the reason for this. I don't like the council to go over this, and if you have a problem with any of the public comment rule, get with Betty Ann or Mr. Slaver before January, the first meeting in January, and let them know what you'd like to change about the rule. With that being said, we're gonna start our meeting. First thing we got tonight is a public hearing, ordinance eight oh two. We've got a long meeting tonight, so I gotta get around and keep it straight. First thing I want to ask for tonight is approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move with Prue to attend the day of December the eighth.
Do we have a second? Do we have any changes on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I was pulling out from Mr. Crouches is broke down, I don't know, eight property transfer certificates, right from a box site, and we leave a curtain reading on hold until that night, I think. Is that right? You got a copy of it, I think, or is it one, or Betty Ann has got a copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That we... You speak ahead, that. I think we're... Kinda moved it from Paul, other than that.
Do we have to vote for that? We have to vote for that, yeah.
Uh, do we have to vote for that?
Are there anyone else? If not, we're voting for the...
With that change.
With that change. All in favor, raise your right hand. Say, "Amen to that."
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question, clarification, that is, do you add ordinance eight oh seven in the property transfer number?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's an issue...
It is. I want to make sure I'm in the government's question.
Oh, pardon, something.
The next thing is approval of a minute, the no-remembered attempt meeting. Have some motion for that?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Chairman, I'll second the minutes, begging no remember-cantor, any business or wishes necessary.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on that? Done, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Okay, now we're gonna get to number one on our agenda, public hearing, ordinance eight oh two. I'll ask Mr. Crouches to address that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we open the public hearing on eight oh two. This is the multi-county industrial park addition for what was Project Yak, it's Cobb Bantris, that'll be located in the Joanna area. That will also apply in the public hearing for eight oh three also. This is a seventeen point nine million dollar investment, and thirteen new jobs for Lawrence County.
Okay, the public hearing for ordinance eight oh two is now open. If you have anything you'd like to say about ordinance eight oh two, please, no problem. If no one to address ordinance eight oh two, we're voting public hearing, and I ask for a motion for third reading, ordinance eight oh two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to motion to approve ordinance number eight oh two for third reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? Not, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to the left. Public hearing for ordinance eight oh three is the same company?
This is a fee agreement, Mr. Chairman.
Fee agreement. Uh, the public hearing for ordinance eight oh three is now open.
Just let me mention that Brett Morlow, their attorney, was unable to be here tonight since his regrets, but ask for favorable approval after the public hearing.
If you'd like to state something against ordinance eight oh three, please come follow. If not, we're closed, public hearing for ordinance eight oh three, and I ask for motion for third reading, ordinance eight oh three.
Mr. Chairman, I move for third reading approval of ordinance eight oh three.
Second, Mr. Anderson's motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to the left. Next thing is third reading, ordinance eight oh one, Mr. Crouches.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we had a public hearing on this a couple of weeks ago. This is an eight million dollar expansion for Raoul U.S. Incorporated, for the project for Reta, for the beautiful brats. This is an eight million dollar expansion of Raoul that just recently expanded and converted here, six eight months ago. We would certainly urge favorable approval, third reading, eight oh one.
And this is in Hunter Bar, correct?
Yes.
Have we had, already, we had public hearing on second reading on this.
That's the first reading.
I'll ask for motion for third reading, ordinance eight oh one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve ordinance eight oh one.
Mr. Chairman, second, ordinance eight oh one, very expensive in the area. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Crouches.
On the six percent assessment ratio for a period of thirty years, and five-year variable millage rate, in accordance with that law, is that in, at the same time for that ten years, twenty percent, twenty percent special source revenue credit? Will it prevent concurrent?
Yeah, all that was concurrent, if it's five-year adjustable village, after every five years, you take a half, and that would be for life.
But that ten years, twenty percent, twenty percent...
That's the first ten years.
The first ten.
Then once that is over, then it goes away.
Thank you.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other discussion? Not, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to the left. Next thing is second reading, ordinance eight oh four. Mr. Crouches.
It's good news. This is a twenty million dollar investment, sixty job, new jobs for the county. This is second reading, project container, is an existing company in the northern part of Lawrence County, and will be making the company announcement and all at the first meeting in January. We would certainly recommend favorable approval, may have four on second meeting. And I apologize, I did not get this, lost the text on eight oh four. It should be at your, at your desk there. Apologize for not getting that too soon, just for those things, with all of the documents we had, I apologize.
Do I have a motion for a second reading, ordinance eight oh four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to the left. Next thing is resolution twenty-fifth, signed by Mr. Crouches.
Yes. This is additional, quite a five million dollar investment by Saran Tech. They have done two fees in recent years, one of twenty-three million, one of twenty-five million. This will put them slightly over to fifty million dollar investment. But this is simply extending their investment period to allow them to make this investment, which their investment period is at the end of this year, they're gonna expect to make this investment, produce equipment until January, so this will get them money. And hopefully, more investment.
Do I have a motion for resolution, seventeenth, signed by Mr. Crouches?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this resolution? Not, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to the left. Everybody's agreeing tonight.
We're set, folks, right?
Next thing, first reading, ordinance eight oh five, Mr. Crouches.
I'm gonna call Mr. Mark, Tom Mark, Mayor of... Tom is well-known to everybody here. Tom is representing Imetec, and he can briefly explain all of this to you. Tom, glad to have you here.
Thank you. First, thank the chairman of members of the council. First, it's good to be back home. Second, I apologize, I have been chastised for not wearing my Christmas tie. I will wear it next time, even though it will be January. This county has been blessed with many good companies, and you've had several mentioned tonight. Imetec is another. They have done three separate fee and lieu of tax transactions. The first two were the old type, where you transferred title. The most recent one was a non-title transfer. Imetec is owned now by a parent corporation, Continental, which you know as Continental Tire, same company. And they are going through a corporate rearrangement, I hate to call it restructuring, but instead of being a subsidiary, they're going to actually be part of Continental, but they want to keep all three of their fee and lieu of tax transactions still enforced in effect, and so is allowed by state law by each of the fee and lieu of tax statutes. They have simply asked that Lawrence County approve simply transferring the fee and lieu of tax from the subsidiary to the parent corporation, and that is all this ordinance does. Do you have to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Does anyone have any questions?
Where is the parent company located?
They are located literally right at the Greenville County line. If you're on three eighty-five going up toward Greenville, right before the four eighteen, Highway fourteen bridge, they're over on the left-hand side of the road. You see a green and blue colored logo there.
It's the parent company. What parent, where is the Continental? The parent company?
The parent, oh, sorry, the parent company is Continental.
Where is it located?
Oh, where, um, well, the parent corporation itself is German, but Continental has a big new tire company in Sumter County. That is their major investment in South Carolina, in Sumter County. They have, the company that will own Imetec after this is Continental USA, which is the U.S. branch of Continental. The parent company is in Germany. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm wearing my hearing aids, but I still mis-eared you.
Well, I know we haven't gotten a motion and a favor yet, but while Tom was up here, I didn't want anybody to have any questions. Anybody else got any more questions, Tom? Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you very much.
Do we have a motion for first reading, ordinance eight oh five?
I'd like to make that a motion, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. No other discussion, we're voted by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to the left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council.
Number five, I'm gonna call on Mr. Ernest Slavers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna take a break, maybe. See, this involves a, ordinance per reading, eight oh six, that involves the city of Clinton and the county, the Clinton Belt Corporation, Lawrence County Belt Corporation, and a project that will benefit the city of Clinton, construction of a building down there. What it involves is de-adannaization of some property, transfer title to the county, and then the county will transfer title back to the Clinton Belt Corporation. I'm taking this, I have to quickly, quickly. No cost to the county, it's just intent to try to help the city in a project they've been involved with for a number of months. And this was discussed prior, I think the city manager of Clinton made a presentation on this in executive session about a month ago. And again, the, I think, throughout, there's a couple times in the ordinance that says there's no out-of-pocket call for Lawrence County, it's simply a transfer of property to allow them to proceed the project if they deem appropriate, and they'll be good for the county long-term. And I've heard per reading of this, Mr. Still, all of you in the city of Clinton, any questions, Mr. Crouches, and you can also add anything to this appropriate, but we ask for a first reading, council, in the course of that's our answer questions. It's a little bit of a, a little complicated, but we'll try to answer questions if we have.
I ask for motion for first reading, the ordinance eight oh six.
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any questions or discussions by other members of the council?
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing. It's important to me that we all understand, and that the county understands that this is, this is a transfer of real estate for economic development. And we spent some time with Phil Ball in the back office, and I agree that I think this is very important, and it'd be very, very good move for Clinton, and I appreciate you working with the cities of Lawrence, Clinton, very well there. So I think this is a good move for all of the candidates.
Anyone else? If not, we're voting for first reading, ordinance eight oh six, by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to the left. The next is a resolution by Mr. Stuart Jones. I'll call him in.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution addressing concerns of me and my constituents and citizens of Lawrence County regarding the refugee resettlement program here in the United States. What I want to make perfectly clear here, I've consulted with Muslims in our community, Christians in our community. This is in no way a resolution that says we are closing ourselves off to refugees or immigration or anything like that, I believe very strongly, in lawful immigration and assisting refugees in crisis. The concern is that has been raised by our FBI or vetting committees, our security agencies that vet these individuals, refugees coming here with the United States, and they've expressed inadequate abilities to vet these individuals. So what this is, this is expressing our opposition to this program until the time when we can be reassured that the vetting committees are sure that we're not letting terrorists into our community. We've got Muslims here in our community that have told me straight out that they don't, they've left for those reasons, they left these places in the Middle East for those reasons, and they do not want terrorist individuals coming to Lawrence County. So that is, that's all I've got for this resolution. I would like to make a motion for this resolution to be passed. Thank you.
We got a motion. Before I ask for a second, I'm gonna pass a discussion on this, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Fitz.
Mr. Chairman, I will be in support of this resolution. I have some reservations, but ultimately, I will support it. No further comments.
Mr. Dan?
I'm starting by saying that I'm with this issue for Lawrence County Council, pretty much because it doesn't hold any bearing if higher power choose to send them here. Also, I'm not a global heartily for it. This, to me, this type of resolution in rhetoric provides propaganda to radical Islamic terrorists. So that's all I can say.
Sean?
I have reservations about this resolution, in that this is not a local issue, this is a national issue. We have representatives that serve in Congress, Jeff Duncan, also Lindsey Graham, Kim Scott, and I feel like if anyone have any kind of problem with this issue, they should seat them, because they are the ones who would vote on anything of this nature. This is not a local issue. I'm concerned about the people here in the county, but I feel like you need to address issues where they need to be addressed. And this is a national issue, and I think those are the people that need to be addressing this issue, and those are the people who need to be, this concern needs to be carried.
Do you think that? Mr. Jones, you got anything on that?
Well, I'd like to, public safety being of the utmost concern, unfunded mandates that we talk about very much, so that's, that's the main reason for voicing this opposition to this. We've gotta be careful who comes into our community, and I think we have a place to stand up when vetting committees and FBI, our security agencies are saying, we can't guarantee that these individuals are not tied or linked to terrorist organizations. Thank you.
Mr. Knight?
I just don't wanna be a part of voting in something for a bunch of radical people coming into these other countries over there, especially the ISIS. I don't think we have enough scrutiny at the federal level into the state, or local. I hope we do, but it seems like too many people get us by, and I don't wanna be a part of adding to the speed that's taking over one of our country. I don't wanna relocate to radical places, but I don't have anything wrong with the ones that are not radical, but I just don't understand all of it. I think we need to look at this thing very carefully.
Mr. Tom? Couple of quick things. I agree with several the council's made that this is a national issue, but I also feel that we of the council should listen to our constituents, the folks who put us in play, and we were forced to. I have had numerous conversations about this issue, and I think that local government should voice concerns by resolution as our support to our state and national representatives, and I think this is the way to do that. I support immigration as long as it's done legally. Those immigrants, to me, that come into our state, in our United States, legally are here to do the same thing that we did years ago, generations before us, to make a better way for their families. So I believe in that, but I will support this resolution. It is not exactly what I would like to see, word for word, but I would definitely like to see this held, it lead to the point that we can feel secure in those, those immigrants coming into our, and refugees coming into our state. Thank you.
I've also had some other resolutions about this, not for myself, but as the people that I represent in this county. Do I make a decision for everyone I represent in this county, because I am a county council? I looked at the last paragraph, it says, whereas Lawrence County Council strongly favors a moratorium on all refugees coming into the state until the vetting problems and other problems associated with the refugee resettlement program can be addressed. So basically, it's not saying that you, by signing this agreement, it's not saying that you do not want some of these refugees in the United States, it's basically saying that you want these people checked out before they come into the United States. I had a phone call before we came to meet tonight, and the ladies at the meeting tonight, and she expressed great concern for it, and I think it gets into religion, or separation of the church and state, so there's a lot of things that gets into, but I look at it, where do you draw the line? And I, I was watching Face the Nation, I believe that's where it was Sunday morning before I went to church, and there was a Muslim lady sitting up there, thinking asleep with her eyes, her face, and she was saying that she did not support anything that was happening over there, anything that was happening here, but I made a statement, what's the difference in this woman sitting there looking like that, and the woman that did the shooting in San Bernardino last week, they were sitting side by side, they looked like twins, so they say history repretes as they have. Now, if you go back to World War Two, when Japanese burned Pearl Harbor, there was a lot of Japanese citizens in the United States that were put in camps, because you didn't know who your friend was and who, who your friend was not. So that's the same situation we got now. We got people out here that you think might be your friend, just like the lady in San Bernardino, that I think, think some of the people, they killed, or people that gave her a baby shower, and gave them gifts and so forth, and then she came back with hostility in her mind and killed them. So where do you draw the line? But I look at the last paragraph, and I'm gonna vote for this, but I'm voting for myself, I'm not voting for the people I represent in this county. This is the way I look at it. I feel like the people should be vetted, if they're okay, let them come in. Now I'll ask for a second. Anybody want a second, a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and second. So we discussed it, all in favor, raise your right hand. That's four, all vote. Three, four and three, so it passes. I know that was a lengthy discussion there, but I felt like it was something to make big out on paper. The next thing is a resolution, twenty-fifth... The next thing is a resolution, 2015-32, commendation for Sally Lancaster. Do we have a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the resolution to, for commendation for Sally Lancaster. Previous, our former board as she retires.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I would always, I would, I would like to say too that it's a great honor to write a resolution for Miss Sally Lancaster, she put in thirty years with the county. And do I understand that we will get her maybe here at the next meeting and give her this? We will make a resolution. So we'll vote on this now, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, eight, nine. My next item, I'm going to call on Mr. Robert Rush to press the words.
Chairman, this county has a long history of working with Vulcan Materials Group in the Gray Court area and the quarry that they have up there. Back in the late eighties, Vulcan Materials, as I understand, donated a parcel to the county for the construction of a rural collection facility at the end of Webb Road. After about twenty-five years of operating that facility, Vulcan now finds itself in a position where they would like to, to have that property back to unlock some additional reserves on their property, extend the life of their operation out there. Vulcan has made a formal request to swap this parcel with another parcel that they own on Quarry Road, which runs parallel to the interstate, Frontier Road, if you would. Vulcan has made the offer that they would incur all the costs associated with clearing, grading, constructing a new collection site on this new parcel prior to the property swap, which signifies a very significant investment on their part. Essentially making the cost for the county to relocate negative, or negative, excuse me. The proposed new location again would be on Quarry Road. It's a less residential area to where the rural collection site is now. It's kind of sandwiched between the Carolina concrete plant that's out there and the interstate itself. The layout for this new site is attached in your packet. It was kind of put together, designed by our landfill rural collection manager, Mr. Chris Hurry. He's here with us tonight in conjunction with Vulcan. We actually did the drawings and all the estimates for what the relocation would cost. Representative from Vulcan, Mr. Lewis, Lewis Callahan is also here to answer any questions you might have. There are both pros and cons to this move. Pros would be that the rural collection site would be in a less residential area. We would have better access to the area via the interstate and Quarry Road for our trucks that move these open top containers in and out, the trash in and out of the site. Cons would be that it would be a little further drive, about a mile, for gray court residents. And it is a smaller site than where we are sitting at now. Although this department feels that the layout will still work on a smaller site because we have other sites of similar size throughout the county. Again, after much discussion, verification of layout, design, the, the cost that Vulcan would incur to build a new facility, the public works department would be in favor of the property swap and relocation. We recommend approval of ordinance eight oh seven. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. The Vulcan representative, Mr. Callahan, or Mr. Curry would also answer any questions that you might have.
We did contact Mayor Gregor and discussed this with him and he didn't, he didn't have problems.
And this is going to be ordered and settled with seven?
Yes.
That's what's going to happen. And I gather by what Mr. Rush has said, you are in agreement with this?
I, I am in agreement with this. Again, working with Vulcan Materials, unlocking some additional reserves that will prolong the, the operation out later, having a quarry inside the county is, is vital to construction costs down in the county. And again, a little convenience in swapping the site, it's a very small price to pay compared to what Vulcan would be investing in this, in this property swap and construction of a new facility.
And I understand that Vulcan donated that property to Lawrence County and didn't give it to you?
That's my understanding that they, the site that we are on now was donated by Vulcan in the late eighties for our rural collection facility.
Do I have a motion for a reading of order, first reading of ordinance eight oh seven?
Second.
Second for discussions, chairman. Got a motion and second. We'll start the discussion with Mr. Todd.
Just a couple of quick notes. So I, I think there's another pro there. We're going to end up with a new, completely restored, completely new box site at no cost to county.
That is correct. We're currently refurbishing some of the other box sites we have around the county that were built around the same time. This site isn't really due for refurbishing yet, but will be in the near future. This will essentially provide us with a new site, definitely a pro.
And the only, the only concern I have there, so to speak, is the schedule. Schedule wise, the new site would open prior to the current site closing. We will have no interruptions in citizens' availability to the site.
It's my understanding we'll work something out, there'll be some logistics in moving attendance offices and a few things, but we would not, probably would not discontinue service at a site during the move. If we do, it'd be for maybe half day or, or one day, nothing. Sites are typically closed on Wednesdays and we'd probably try to move it on a day that they were closed.
Boy, that's very minor disruption.
That is correct.
I, I, I think.
Knight?
This won't, this landfill park, it won't contaminate from being an old forest site. Contaminate in a water world.
No, we, the site that we're moving, that we would be moving to is a, is a green area. It's not a site that Vulcan has previously mined. It's actually across the road from their operation, across Quarry Road from their operation.
And will people carry their trash out, trash can road the same as always?
They don't, right now, they currently use Webb Road, where the current site is located at. They follow Quarry Road out to the site along the interstate there.
Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Madden?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Madden, or sir, Mr. Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rush, and where is on, on this map, the, is there a residence? You said it was in a less residential area. Is there a residence close to this property line or across the road, Quarry Road? I'm not familiar with it.
Across Quarry Road, directly across Quarry Road would be the quarry itself. On the larger map on the previous page you had there would be the quarry. To the west, immediately to the west is Carolina Concrete Plant, sort of a big concrete plant near. Then to the west of that, several hundred feet away from our, our property would be the first residences. These are rental properties, if I'm not mistaken. And they're not as, as populated as the current site on Webb Road. It has two small residential developments off Mesquite Lane and Nachas Lane, if I'm not mistaken, with several dozen houses, residences in there.
I've heard a question, Mr. Chairman. We've got ten of these sites around the county and I don't, I think, by my time here, I think we moved one or, maybe one or two where it is. Would there ever be enough, ever be a chance of them coming back and reclaiming this? Or would this be a bad affirmative?
No, it's my understanding where this, where this site is located, it'd be not something that they would physically be able to mine where it sits now. It's piece of property, it's kind of, it's locked from them, you know, away from where their, their mine plan would be.
I call for a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, eight, nine.
Thanks, Chairman.
This is first reading, right? Old potatoes, though. My next item is approval of submission to the government for appointment of Lawrence County a moral hospital board of trustees. Looks like this man's got about a ten-page resume here. I call on Mr. Segers.
Yes, sir. This is nomination of Mr. Tony Johnson, who is, I understand, a professor at Good Farming at Pratt &amp; College. He would, let's see, let me replace him. They, these are, the way it works, the hospital board makes, makes recommendation to county council. County council approves it, submits, submission of the nomination to the governor. A little committee being held in November, I think, to discuss, to review this. And hospital nominating committee came forward, I think Dr. Pitts and others layer to address this. Dr. Pitts, I defer to you if you have any comments, just in our common person, I don't think you.
Yes, I'd be glad to. I do know Mr. Johnson and he will be certainly an asset to Lawrence County healthcare system and to the larger rural health system. And this comes as a unanimous recommendation from the committee for approval by the full council.
Do I have a motion to submit this name to the government?
So may we.
We don't need, why?
No, it's coming from the committee to make a motion. You just have to take a vote.
Colin, do we have any discussion before we take a vote? If not, we vote by the short of our right hand, I'll vote. Seven, eight, nine. The next thing is a vote by Mr. Jones. Call on Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a call based on information gathered from previous Health Emergency Services Committee meetings to call a, another Health Emergency Services Committee meeting to set guidelines and start a process for qualifications for ambulance providers to participate in Lawrence County EMS. And I'm not sure, do we need a motion to, to call that meeting or do we just need to schedule?
Yes, if that is without a motion.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to schedule that Health Emergency Services Committee meeting.
This is to do what, Mike?
This is to, using the information that we gathered from our previous meetings, goals, concerns with our county EMS and E nine one one. This is to start the process of planning, setting guidelines and qualifications for an RFP, a request for proposals from private ambulance providers. Nothing said in stone, this is just basically a, a way to see if we can get assistance in those areas where we need help in the county.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Before I ask for a second, we're going to discuss, starting with Mr. Pitts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the continued requests that we receive is to address the Western Lawrence County Force. And I believe this may be a way of adding AMATIC five without raising taxes. So I think it's worth exploring Mr. Jones' proposal. And having said that, I have no further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Madden?
I'm for another committee meeting. We all know that we need help in emergency services in Lawrence County. And we just need, we need to keep at it until we figure out what the best solution is going to be.
Ms. Sam?
I know. Are you playing off this, is the chair playing off putting it in committee or are you beating on the vote?
If there's patience, it's going to be a special committee.
Oh, you're going to have another kind of committee?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
If there's patience.
All right, so is this, okay. I'm looking at the other, we have another ordinance regarding private ambulance service.
We've already got an order, Tom, we already got a provider agreement in the county for private ambulance service.
So how will that affect that ordinance?
We can, really it's not an ordinance, it's an agreement.
It's an agreement, okay.
Agreement, agreement, for private providers. This would be, that would stay in place, I assume, until the RFQ, RFP is finished and submitted for further response. I don't think anything will change until the council decides what it wants to do, either through committee or collectively to, you know, in the future, as a, as a public. If it would take a, the RFP would have to be prepared by somebody, embedded by somebody and submitted. You know, it's got to be final proof, that's about the council before you, before you submit it. So nothing will change until the council try to have it received. It's hard, Mr. Jones, the proposal.
Mr. Knight?
I'm for private enterprise, but still we've got questions about it. So if we're going to have another committee meeting, I think that'd be, might be my thing to do.
Mr. Todd? Yeah, this, this proposal is for, I need to make sure I understand this proposal. Mr. Chairman, this proposal is to prepare and just to get a request for, basically on RFQ or RFP for qualifications to provide ambulance providers. But I'm not sure that the previous committee had gotten to this point yet. I'm not against the proposal and I'm not against putting out RFQ. We've already had one, we've already had one service provider provide us with their proposal. And I'm certainly not against getting additional proposals of similar manner. My concern is, has the original committee come to this point yet? We need to make some decisions on how our EMS is going to continue to improve services. So is that, is that by additional service provider? Is it by more than one additional service provider? Or is it by expanding our care and even the service? I'm not against this proposal at all. Certainly I love to hear other points of view, but this is a way to do that. I just don't want to ask for our, I don't, I don't want to ask these requests or proposals before we're ready to put that into service. In other words, I don't want other service providers out there to provide us, to spend the time, to give us proposals something we're not sure we're going to even use yet. So why waste their time doing it if you're serving that?
I would get this with a motion.
As I read, the motion is for proposal to be submitted by, I apologize, I'll skip over that, that the county preparing distribution of a request for proposal slash qualification to provide ambulance providers to participate in Lawrence County EMS. My only concern there is that, is that Jim's ambulance service is going to spend his time doing something that I'm not sure we're ready to receive yet. That, that, that's all.
I'm just trying to clarify what Sid here, what Mr. Jones' motion was, was to have a committee meeting to discuss this.
I think we're on the same page here because I mean, that's, you know, what I'm, what I'm looking at.
That's not your motion, Mr. Jones, was to ask for a committee meeting?
Right, yes, sir. If you continue the process, that's all.
Yes, sir. Not, not to stop.
Not specific to, as long as this committee meeting is not specific to us preparing and distribution of RFP, I'm okay. I, I want to have a committee, committee meetings to explore other options to assist our EMS. Call volume, call times, workers' well-being, providing services.
Probably up to the majority of the committee to tell you what to say anyway. But I think, I think we're all talking about the same thing, it's just a little, you know.
I guess my thing there, my concern there is I don't want this committee to go out for the one purpose. I want the committee to go out to continue to explore additional opportunities to improve services. I just want to make sure we're not going into a committee meeting. And this is the only thing we have to discuss. I don't want that proposal to pass.
Does that understand?
Okay, one more. For the protection of Lawrence County and Lawrence County citizens, this would be a very lengthy process, by what I read. Before asking for a proposal, you need to have a proposal to ask for, which would involve a lot of people and several meetings. You'd have the legalities, processes, administration, agreement, what's required, what's expected, the cost. All this needs to be proposed by Lawrence County and not by the provider. We pass that. We already have provider agreements in the EMS service, which present- this. We already have provider agreements in the EMS service, which presently are not completely followed as required. Paul, I'm going to vote against this, if this is the way it's going to work, if it passes. The committee will be all council members, Mr. Chad Borel, Mr. Joey Avery, Mr. Cruz Shanks is the advisor, Ms. Anderson is chairman of the committee, if this passes. And it'll be a lengthy process with several meetings to come up with something like this, for protection of Lawrence County, protection of Lawrence County citizens. So do we have a second on this motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Let me say, I'm in motion.
I said.
In motion and second.
I, I want, I like for the motion to be stated again specifically, what you are asking, not what you, if I'm getting confused, maybe, what you've stated again and what you are saying, I want to know exactly what you are saying, or request.
Okay, um, the, the way the motion's stated here, um, is that we distribute a request for proposal slash qualification to provide ambulance providers to participate in the county EMS program. The way I'm taking this is that we have another committee meeting and continue the process of looking at the problem areas, we set guidelines, I've got a step by step on how I would do this, you know, just ideas of how we could go about setting those guidelines for criteria, um, for, um, what we request from the private providers, if that's the route we go.
It would be a lengthy process, uh, like I said, there's all kind of legalities and processes, we've got a provider agreement already in for private ambulance services, uh, the only thing that I, I would like to say happen to the EMS, if somebody's come in here with enough money and just take over the EMS system.
I like to...
Go ahead, this is very important.
I like to amend your motion, if you, for a filling amendment, is that the chair appoint a committee who would look at improving the EMS program within the county. I think that would be enough, just improving the, uh, situation, I, I like to take that, and not to say we're going to be looking at, um, providers, but all the thing we're going to do as, as a committee is to go in and look at improving the EMS system and making it more functional for the commu- for the citizens of the county, we just accept that, just for, I appreciate it.
Much improved, Dan, you've stayed for most.
So I asked that, Mr. Joe, my understanding of what the motion was, was to, to, Mr. Jones wanted to establish a committee meeting, to delve into these request proposals and qualifications, and then with what Ms. Anderson said, as, the picture as a whole, based on other discussions that the committees have had. The restatement by Mr. Jones of the motion was that it was to distribute a request proposal and, and qualification through this committee, which seems to be that's, and, that's caught horse, I thought they could get one in front of the other, the committee's got to make a decision first as to whether or not that can happen in the overall scheme of whether or not there's a defect in the system, or whatever, I, I, I think everybody's wanting to get to the same thing, it's just a matter of wording, which I think is a call for a committee, Mr. Wood has indicated committee holds, which would then have to make a decision by majority vote as to whether or not a request for proposal or request for qualifications goes forth, or whatever other scope.
But that's a continual process, it's been going on for the last year and a half.
Correct.
To get to that point, so I think, I think we're all heading the same way, it's just a, it's a train.
I think it's just a matter of signing, and then I think, Mr. Jones, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, I think that's what, what the intent of it is.
That's the ultimate goal, we have a committee meeting and decide what the best route to get to.
That's what I wanted, the best route, but you almost had put a route in place.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want you to put a route in place before we all just meet. I think we need to be open and come in with ideas and then spread out.
Absolutely.
Dr. Pitts, would you agree with that, as far as your second is concerned, as to understanding the motion?
Yes.
As a meeting.
Does everybody on the council understand the motion? Okay, I'm going to call and vote, all in favor of this, please, right now.
Are you talking about, are you?
Opposed?
I'm not opposed, I'm just wondering if you...
Staying?
I was wondering, are you, are you asking for the motion that was amended?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that's the one I want, and so that's seven zero then.
Six, six more.
Six more.
Six, six more.
Alright, thank you.
Everybody was fair, and I, I'll repeat this again, this committee will be all council members, Mr. Chad Borel, Mr. Joey Avery, Mr. Cruz Shanks is the advisor, and give legal advice, and Ms. Anderson will be the chairman. And, uh, I'll leave that up to Mr. Seeger and Ms. Wallace to get that meeting together, the first meeting of private service. Next thing, administrator for, Mr. Ernest Seeger.
Very, uh, very briefly, with some Morgan views, uh, Ms. Parker, excuse me, is Ms. Parker here, she's, okay, uh, we got a, uh, county got a refund on its workers' compensation, uh, payment in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in October, I believe, and, uh, based on audit, they did on, on current expenses and, and, uh, the pool, association counties, wrote, wrote a check back, or better, a hundred thousand dollars, or, or, or reimbursement, or, or, or fees that were, that were overestimated, so, so that, that's some good news, our, our workers got, folks, we, we had this work comp over the years, and our rates were pretty high, but for once, we kind of got, got ahead of it, and I think, uh, our partner, our staff did a very good job in, in, uh, monitoring those situations, and it becomes a very good time. Uh, we're, at least, at least we're here, we're, well, audit has been completed, is, is, is that right?
Yes, sir, we're in the final steps, so they're reviewing the actual audit papers, and we should have a draft, probably, we're about to end the meeting.
Okay, we have the first of the year before we present that to you all, only week one time, in, uh, December, but, uh, we, I think we will have it by, by the deadline, by, by December thirty, so.
Yes.
We're, 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 I mean, visiting, uh, recruiting our staff and working, but, uh, we were pleased to get the, uh, get the refund from the, from the workers' compensation board, and, uh, well, the pool that we, we worked in, that we went and filled one of the budget, helped things, and, and all that, some good, some good news, like you, and I've got.
Workers' comp covers the safety and so forth of the employee, I made, it's the last meeting, we, uh, decided to give employees a hundred dollars for, uh, prison, and, uh, I made the statement, I just wanted to come back to us, but I didn't know it would come back that fast. But, uh, we really come back to good, and the good to employees, employees will be good back to you. And it just shows that our employees are working safely, and I appreciate what they're doing. Next thing is a fifteen minute comment period, uh, if you got something you'd like to say to the county council, please come forward, state your name, and hold your comments for five minutes. But the comment time is up.
My name's Herb Cottin, and, uh, I want to thank, uh, county council for your efforts and your work. To me, this is where democracy happens or doesn't happen, and I'm just delighted to see, uh, you're offering your time and your service. I am deeply saddened by the resolution of blocking refugees coming, uh, for several reasons. Uh, it goes to Councilman McDaniel's invocation prayer, this is the reason for the season. Uh, the refugees we're talking about are not coming from Africa, they're not coming from Western Europe, they're coming from Central America and the Middle East. In other words, they're people that look like Jesus, to be frank with you. And as there was no room in the end, two thousand years ago, we're saying, there's no room for you during this Christmas season, and to me, it's just awfully tragic that we're debating this at this time of year. Uh, the second reason I would speak against this, and I'm against it, or be opposed to it, is it goes against all our affirmations in our Judeo ethic, Judeo-Christian background of being hospitable to that alien, an emphasis that we see again and again in Holy Rick. A third reason that I'm against this is, I think it goes against American core values. We're an immigrant people, and we've always welcomed people, and, uh, for us to reject certain groups is terribly tragic to me. You know, my greatest fear of harm is not against someone who looks different than I am, dresses differently, or speaks a different language, or has a different religion. My greatest fear for myself and my family actually comes from folks who speak my language, uh, part of my community, that's where the greatest fear is. And so I speak against this resolution, especially for this season of the year, I think it's highly regrettable that we're closing our doors. Bye.
Hello, my name is Missy Cottin, and I do appreciate your time tonight, I spoke to several of the long-term earlier, and I do appreciate your time, and I want to say that I do appreciate your efforts for our county. Um, I have, you know, lived in different places, and I appreciate what you do in Lawrence County. Um, we are a, you know, our county is not one of the strongest in the state, but I think we have a good, uh, bunch of people here, and I appreciate what you're doing to further our county and the efforts that you put in it. But I have to agree with, this is my father-in-law, but I have to agree with him in that, that really does sadden my heart, um, as I look at the world around us and what is going on, I see people from, you know, Guatemala, El Salvador, these refugees who are coming in from South America, who are facing gang violence that we've never seen the like of here. When your home is terrorized, and you have people who are extorting you, and, and, you know, coming back, as sometimes the mafia might do later in, in gang war, they take your child and place it in the lead. You know, I don't see us, I don't see how we can turn our backs on those particular refugees who are coming here. And the statement that we have, our resolution that's passed, it is a blanket statement, it also doesn't have a clear end in sight. It's until we see better vetting, well, that is not a measurable thing. Um, I don't know how you, you can see an end to that without having a clear standard in place there, but it also breaks my heart in terms of, of my faith, because I really believe, you know, talk about, uh, poor wandering, way there strangers, that's who we all are, when, until we come into the kingdom of God. And I see these people who are coming from, you know, the disease, they, they have no idea what the true God is, and yet they are begging to come into our country, we have an opportunity to, to bring them into the light of the gospel by the setting foot on our shores. We don't even have to pay this initiative to them, they're begging to come to us. We see these people, there's, there's actually a battle going on in Iran right now, the church has increased by about twenty thousand in the past, like, four years, and it's because Muslims who are becoming disgusted with violence, they want to come to our country. We have a chance to open, open our doors, welcome them in, and express to them the love of Jesus, and yet we're not doing that because we're concerned about our safety. Now, I have two young children in the back, I love my children, and I'm concerned for their safety, but I'm even more concerned, what I'm going to say when I stand in front of God, and I say, you know, I'm part of the county that closed our doors and said, you're not welcome, we don't want you here, and I don't know how many hamster God when he does that, when he's bringing to us people who desperately need him, and yet we say no. And in closing, I'm going to read a scripture to you, this is one of my favorite scriptures, it's from Isaiah, chapter fifty-eight, and this is, this is what, this is the word of the Lord, he says, uh, God says to his, to the Jewish people, he says, uh, shout with the voice of trumpet blasts, tell my people Israel and their sins, they act so pious, they come to the temple every day and seem delighted to hear my laws. You would almost think that this is a righteous nation, that we never abandoned their God. They love to make a show of coming to me and asking me to take action on their behalf. We fasted before you, they say, why aren't you impressed? You've done much penance, and you don't even notice. I would tell you why, it is because you're living for yourselves even while you're fasting. You keep right on oppressing your workers. What good is fasting when you keep on fighting and pouring? This kind of fasting will never get you anywhere with me. You humble yourselves by going with emotions of penance, bowing your head like a blade of grass in the wind, you dress in sackcloth and cover yourselves with ashes. Is this what you call fasting? Do you really think this will please the Lord? No, the kind of fasting that I want cause you to free those who are lonely in prison, and to stop oppressing those who work for you. Treat them fairly and give them what they earn. I want you to share your food with the hungry, and to welcome foreign riders into your homes. Get close to those who need them, and do not hide from your relatives who need your help. And, you know, you think about Lawrence County and where we are economically, listen to what the Lord says when we do those things. If you do these things, your salvation will come like the dawn. Yes, your people will come quickly, your godliness will lead, lead you forward, and the glory of the Lord will protect you from behind, and when you call, the Lord will answer. Yes, I am here, he will quickly reply. So stop oppressing the helpless, and spreading accusations, and spreading vicious rumors. Feed the hungry and help those in trouble. Then your light will shine out from the darkness, and the darkness around you will be as bright as day. The Lord will guide you continually, watering your life when you're dry and keeping you healthy. You will be like a well-watered garden, and your children will, will rebuild the deserted ruins of your seeds, and you will be known as the people who rebuilt their lost seeds. So I, I would just say that to you, humbly, and I appreciate your concern and the care that you take on our county.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to press, councilman? If not, we're closing, closing the comment time, and I'll hear the comments, councilmember, or start with Mr. Thaw.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the comments from anyone who wants to, to stand up and endorse their opinion, so, it doesn't matter what side that I take, I want, I appreciate the time and courage of every citizen to ask to do that. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a safe and healthy holiday season. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like for council to consider, uh, as part of our EMS committee, to consider taking out a second meeting of the month and use that primarily as committee, if scheduled allowed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Knight, no comment. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to thank Pastor Herb and, um, Missy, uh, for voicing their concerns, I share those concerns. Um, my, my ancestors were immigrants as well, and they were covenant antlers, they, uh, came from the United States, fleeing state-sponsored religion, and, um, I, my heart is broken, um, by the people that are hurt in those countries, that are being killed in those countries. Um, my concern also San Bernardino and Paris and all these recent attacks that we witnessed, uh, I think about the people here, and I've spoken with Muslims in our community, Christians in our community that have fled those areas, and they don't just want us to just tell, just allow, you know, everybody to come here without knowing if those individuals are the reason they left, part of the reason they're fleeing. And that's what I want to be perfectly clear about, I, I would never support saying that we're going to, um, you know, permanently do anything, but for me, it would be until our vetting agencies say, we're sure that these people are not affiliated with these terrorist groups. Um, that would be the thing for me that would, um, make me feel better about the situation, so. And, um, also, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and, um, just wish everybody a safe, happy Christmas, and, um, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Anne?
I'm just going to give out, um, wishing everybody a happy holidays, and just making sure that we keep the real reason for the season, and, um, and have a safe, big, I appreciate it.
Mr. Madden?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, I'd love to see you, hope you get everything you deserve from Santa Claus.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, but I'll see you, hope you get everything you deserve from Santa Claus.
Mr. Pitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I too would like to express my, um, thanks to Reverend Cottington and Missy. Um, it was those comments that, that really, uh, really had me torn, uh, as we voted on that resolution, um, because of my Christian principles. And I hope that I made the right decision for the constituents that I represent, and many people that I talked to, that's the way they asked me to, to cast my vote, and that's exactly what I did tonight. The other thing is I would like to, uh, as many others have said, wish everyone a, a very Merry Christmas this, this year.
I would too like to express, I gratitude to everyone that's worked for me this year, as chairman, I tried to do the best I could. Maybe next year might be a little bit better. But, uh, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, and, uh, as I said before, I mentioned how history repeats itself. We had a situation when Jimmy Carter was the president of the United States, when the Cuban refugees came into this country. There was no one vetted. President Carter told Cuba, we welcome all refugees with open arms. What Castro did, he opened up all his prisons, sailed them on ships, and sent them to the United States. And the United States had to deal with, uh, racists, murderers, so forth, so I think vetting of refugees coming into this country is very important. And like I said, uh, I appreciate everyone that has worked for me this past year, and I know I haven't satisfied everybody, I've tried my best, uh, uh, Mr. Sager and Ms. Walsh have been very well, uh, helped me, helped me, just, I can't put it in words how much they've helped me. But with that, we got an executive session, we have a contractual matter, which, uh, will involve Mr. Ted Devonport, Mr. Jeff Field, and we have an employment matter, which will involve, uh, Debbie's not here.
No, I, I, I took her.
Mr. Sager, thank you for that. I'll add a motion to go on executive session, all in favor, raise your hand. Would you, would you?
I move.
We have a motion.
I move for executive session on one contractual matter and one employment matter, Mr. Chairman.
That's second. All in favor, raise your hand. Seven zero. We had a lengthy meeting tonight, uh, that's what happens when you don't, what, Mr. Thaw has commented on before about not having a second meeting in a month. We had a meeting tonight that's about twice as long as our usual meeting is, but I appreciate everyone's time.